Okay, Karen, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, Mike, if you could take down the graphics.
All right, well, good evening Restonians and welcome to the Reston Association Board of Directors and Friends of Reston Board of Directors joint session for this evening, August 19th, 2021, 6:00 PM. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. We have quorum. I have a tiny correction on the agenda before we vote to approve it. And that is the last item on the agenda, the adjournment should be I and not G. Okay, so with that, I will ask, with that correction, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as corrected.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I think.
Whatever.
I think, I think Bob, you might have edged Tim out. So Tim, do you want to do the second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor.
All right.
And pose. Okay, motion carries. Before we move on to member comments, I just want to say that we are very happy to be having this joint meeting with Friends of Reston. It's been a while since we've done one of these. And so it's, it's good that we're doing it tonight. And I have to apologize to everybody, both boards here, because a Zoom link was not sent out, but it looks like you all found the, the link to the meeting. We are, Christina Easterly, our board and committee and legal liaison, had the nerve to go on vacation. And so a couple of administrative things fell through the cracks, but we're all here. Okay. So are there any member comments?
Well, I guess we're all RA members. I would just like if everyone just could go around and, I don't know if you would like to do this, Karen, but.
I, I am going to do that in, as the next, the big intro to the next meeting where everybody introduces themselves.
All right, great.
So thank you for bringing that up, though I, that, that isn't my plan. So are there any member comments from members who are not part of either board? Or if you are and you want to make a member comment, you can do that as well. Not seeing or hearing that we have any of those, we will move on. So the next item is the Friends of Reston Strategic Plan Review. And I'm going to turn that over to Friends of Reston Board President, Carol Nahorniak. And I would like to, I think, because I don't know if, if all the Friends of Reston Board members are familiar with all their RA Board members, so I think maybe everybody should introduce themselves. So Carol, do you want to start it off? Do you want to introduce your team or have everybody?
I think if they're feeling themselves so that their faces will appear on the screen, because I don't know how many people we have in attendance, so it could be awkward to try.
Well, I will introduce Carol. She is the Friends of Reston Board President. So. So Carol, go ahead and, well, I will just, I will call on people as I see them then.
All right. Yeah, well, I can go through them. It's much easier. First, we have Glenn, our Vice President is Glenn Walker.
Hi, everybody.
And our Secretary is Fran Lovis.
Oh.
And we have, so next on our list would be Marcus Lusak, who's, I'm just saying in seniority, he wasn't able to join us tonight, but I'm pretty sure everyone else is here. So I think we, next we have Janine Greenwood. Are you here, Janine?
Yep.
Just waving.
Good to see you. And Kathleen Driscoll.
Former RA President Kathleen.
And, pardon me, Jimmy Norcross.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And Maggie Edwards.
Hi.
Hi, Maggie.
And our Executive Director, Kia.
Hello.
Do you all know Kia already? Hi, Kia.
Okay.
I don't think I've forgotten any, because the other two board members that are on our board are Karen Anton and Hank Lynch.
Yes, we are ex officio board members. So yeah, so I am Karen Anton. You all know me, I'm the RA President. And Mr. Mooney?
John Mooney. I'm the RA Vice President this year and Director for the North Point District. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to call on you as I see you on my screen. Sarah?
Hi, I'm Sarah De Souza, and I'm the At-Large Director.
And Mr. Patreen?
Hi, Bob Patreen, second year At-Large Director and also the Treasurer of RA.
Okay, and Mr. Dowling?
Hello, everyone. Tim Dowling. I'm one of the At-Large Directors.
And I think, are there any board members that I'm not seeing? It looks like that is it for who's here right now. And I expect that some others will be joining us. Okay, so thank you and welcome, everybody. And Carol, I'm going to turn things over to you now to go over your strategic plan.
Sure.
And would, if we have that capability tonight, would you, I'm assuming you'd like it brought up on the screen?
If you have the capability. I was presuming that it would be difficult, but if anyone, if everyone had had the chance to have a look at it before the meeting tonight, so that, you know, if you saw anything that didn't make sense to you, or that, you know, how does this work, whatever, that you'd have a chance now to ask about it.
Mike, can, is it possible to bring that up?
Yeah, I, I do have it ready and we can stroll through it. So Carol, if you just want me to kind of down the page, I can do that.
Thank you, Mike.
So our, our plan is pretty basic, three pages. We keep it simple, divided into three categories, which are, first off, administration, and which gets us to accomplish all of our other goals, such as fundraising, which is the second category, and program. We, we had a different format for this until a few years ago, and we realized that we would, it was suggested to us and we realized we would like to make our plan adjustable so that we could probably not better align, but at least be cognizant of what RA would also, you know, what RA's strategic plan is, so that some, you know, a lot of what we're doing is in line with what RA desires as well. So I don't think I need to go through it point by point. In general, as I said, it's administration, pardon me, fundraising, and program. And so we're all volunteers. Our Executive Director, the wonderful Kia, is the person who's involved with every one of these items. There are various board members are named, different tasks that we have listed. Most of it does, except for some program and some administration, the rest of it, we're very focused on fundraising. And right now, working on coming to conclusion of our camp scholarship campaign, we have a goal to reach $13,000 to $15,000 to supplement the cost of sending, you know, economically disadvantaged children to Reston camps. So we always receive a statement at the end of the season from, I believe Laura, who tells us, you know, how many kids were in the program, and that we can, we can then write a check to Reston Association to help supplement the cost of that. And the next big thing we're working on is our, another fundraiser, and Kia and Jimmy and Marcus are pulling that together along with Ha for volunteers, and along with Laura and Larry, who have done these runs before. And it's shaping up to be a really good, great event, as well as it could be a very good fundraiser. We're all actively seeking sponsors right now. And that's going very well, thanks to Jimmy and, and to Glenn, especially for getting a couple of gold sponsors in already. So it's really wonderful.
That's great. You want to talk about when that's happening, Carol?
That is on Sunday, October 17th, and it starts and ends at Brown's Chapel Park. There will be packet give outs at the lake house, so it gets the lake house little, you know, people maybe have never been there before. So that's nice if they'll be actually visiting that site. And registration has been set up. This is, you're probably, you may be familiar with our annual Spring Nature Center 5K. This run is being, or pardon me, it's a run, walk, strollers, whoever wants to participate can sign up to, to do the event. It takes about an hour to do it. It's only 5K and you can run or walk that an hour easily. But the, yeah, the, the format is different, the registration is different. We are working with Potomac River Running, which has been running races like this all over Reston, all over Northern Virginia for many, many years. And they really know how to get this all done right and proper registration and all of that sort of stuff. So we're looking forward to the actual event.
And if I'm not mistaken, Larry Butler will be not only running in the race, but acting as MC?
That's the one thing that's the same as the Nature Center 5K, is Larry gets up there on the mic, he tells everyone about the course, and then he actually runs the course, and then he comes back and participates in the, the little celebration at the end where the medals are given out, and there's food and prizes for participants. And Kia mentioned the other day that there's going to be a live band there, which is something else different that we haven't had before. So Rock to Rock, which is really cool.
Um, yeah, and yeah, and Ha will be providing volunteers the day before, I guess, the day of, right?
Right. Plenty for the day before. And then, you know, we really love it to, our board is always encouraged if they're able to come out to cheerlead. And, you know, when the, when the runners are coming in, it's, it's kind of exciting. We're going to have Walker the Wood Packer there, and I think Myrtle the Turtle's going to be there. So it really is for all ages. And the cost is, I think it's $40, you know, for the later registrations. If you register now, it's like $35, something like that. I don't have those prices in my brain. But there'll be some marketing on with RA's help. There are a number of marketing tools are going to be used, you're going to see coming out in the weeks before the, you know, in September. There's a press release going out, so people beyond RA members will also know about it. And so it's, it, this is one thing, it's not only fundraising for us, but it also fits into our marketing plan, which is to create more awareness of Friends of Reston, and which, you know, in the long run garners, garners us more donations for different projects. In this particular run, will, the money raised will go toward scholarships and enrichment for RA youth programs, for, for the youth themselves to participate in RA programs, similar to the camp scholarships.
Okay.
That's what we're working on right now. But we've also got a whole lot of background tasks that we're, we work on, on a, on a ongoing basis. Janine and Kathleen, you know, we're looking, you know, looking at the paperwork and making sure our bylaws are updated appropriately, a memo of understanding that we're going to be working on. We've got a chart of, you know, we're just going to start working on a chart of our board members and what everyone's strengths are, so that we can, you know, when we're, we're identifying tasks and also for future board members, that they, that we make sure that we're recruiting people that have the strengths that, that our board can make the best use of.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from, from either board about the strategic plan and what's coming up?
Excuse me, perhaps I could ask Kathleen to, to speak briefly about the Reston Festival renewal? I fondly remember.
I would love to do that. And that is definitely something that this board agreed they would love to do. But we put it on hold for the very simple reason that there were no public gatherings. We discussed it. It almost seems very futile to make two firm plans when in fact, beyond October is a real question mark.
I agree.
Yeah, so we have a lot of interest. A lot of people want to do it. And I would imagine that a lot of people in Reston want to do it, but.
I think, I think first of all, we have to plan the venue where we would have it.
Right.
And what month is it typically done in? Or do you guys move, have you guys moved that event?
That event was canceled, I would say, or I was on the board, so probably 2006.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It has been a long time. Okay.
Long time.
It was typically held in July. The last place it was held was, was that Reston Town Center, but I already assured that that would not be a potential venue.
Okay.
It's been that long since there's been one, really?
Uh huh. You know, it may have been 2007, but.
I think it was a bit, it was probably, I think at least 10 years ago, we had one at Reston Town Center. Ran there for two or three years. So it was mostly RCC and Town Center, RCC primarily who operated it. Or committee from RCC, I should say.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other discussion, questions about Friends of Reston Strategic Plan? Or any other comments that any of the Friends of Reston Board members want to make at this point?
Just admiration and thanks for all your work.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Sarah, did you have something?
I, I just had one quick note. I see the Reston Green Program with Fran and Karen. If there's any way the EAC could work with you guys on that, that'd be great.
That would be wonderful. That's the plan.
Thank you.
Our plan actually, it got delayed, pushed along because of, you know, we had a new Executive Director come in. And then, you know, as, and we would have liked to, I think originally, we were, when we did this a few years ago, wanted to have it in January. It's, it's one of those things that gets pushed along. Here we are in August, you know, trying to get this session done. But the, our strategic plan was, normally would be finalized in February for, for the coming year, but we didn't finalize it. I think it was in June. Just waiting for different developments to occur. And so we will, it'll be our plan, you know, through, well into 2022. And at that time, we'll, we'll, as things are accomplished, we'll be freshening it up for a 2022 plan.
I was wondering, does RA's strategic plan, is that available for viewings to see how they mailed?
Sure, it's on, it's on our website.
It's on your website, okay?
Absolutely. Um, what else? Oh, and just a couple other things that I'm aware of, because I, I'm an ex officio board member, is the, the roundup programs on WebTrack and Red's Table. Carol, if you want to say something about that, I don't know if all the board members are aware that that is going on.
We renamed the WebTrack into WebTrack Given, because we had two roundup situations, and there was some confusion about that. So WebTrack, I know we were, you know, talk, there was talk about we were going to see it before it went live, but in, in getting it established to work, it apparently was put on there and is working now. And it has, it is garnering donations. We had for June, $560 something dollars. For July, $740 something dollars came in from people making, clicking to donate to Friends of Reston on their RA, RA's WebTrack site. And the wonderful Maggie Edwards is very close connected to people at Red's Table. And as soon as she joined our board, she offered that the restaurant could do a roundup program where when people, diners are presented with their bill, there is a little, right under, right above or just under tips, it just says Friends of Reston, and people can contribute right there. And, you know, they're not rounding, necessarily rounding up to the, to a next highest number, but they're, you know, if they're contributing $2 or $5 or $50 with their bill, because they're aware of Friends of Reston, they know the good work that is done by the organization, then they're, they're happy to contribute.
And it's generated a couple thousand dollars, I think, so far, right?
That's what I was just going to say. Yeah.
It's camp scholarships. Yeah, so that's great.
And Red's Tables also agreed to contribute $1,000 in addition to whatever that system.
Yes, thank you, Red's Table.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other discussion on the strategic plan, we, we can, oh, Jennifer?
Um, I was just wondering, is there anything that we can do as the RA Board to help support your strategic plan or the activities that you have going on, big or small? I had one very small idea, but I wish I had more, and I might have more after this meeting. But my one small idea was the, when you guys have things that are going on that are date-driven, we might be able to put those calendar dates on the RA calendar and list them as Friends of Reston, you know, events or, or activities or campaigns or whatever you guys are doing, and maybe even link back to your site so that they could get more information.
We do, we have that happening already. That's on our, on our strategic plan when tasks are named. There are some things that are, it's Kia and Sean at RA, RA employee, who help us with that. And for instance, the, the run will be put onto RA's website. The camp scholarships, I don't know if you've been on Reston.org lately, but when you go to the site, the big pop-up that comes up about contributing. So RA is a very good, very good at supporting us. And as long as we remember to ask them, as long as we forget, oh yeah, RA could help us with this. And also designing, you know, with our 5K sponsorship package and the flyer, that is, was on RA staff to design that for us. So we do get a lot of assistance from RA. But yeah, we, we could be, I think that, that, that the RA Board maybe could be, maybe we could be doing more to inform you as a board to keep you in tune with the activities we've got going on that you would be interested in letting other people know about. So maybe we can figure out a way to do that after our meetings that, I know your meetings are so long, but to have a quick, you know, little nutshell report of what Friends of Reston is up to lately.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I haven't seen things on our event calendars. I've seen things on the RA website once you kind of delve down into it, but I hadn't seen them on, on the event calendars. But we also all have been, been having a whole lot of events last year. So, so maybe that's why.
That's what it is.
Yeah. But yeah, I would say, you know, that's probably something they can even put in our board packets, if there's like a summary, you know, just like a bullet point list of, here's an update on what we're doing, and we could put it in the, in our board packet to give it more exposure to members. And, and then if, to us as a board, that way, if you, when you do go to have events or things where we can kind of publicly support you, and we can go ahead and put it on our calendars.
Right. And that's as, as, that was years ago, that was brought up. And I guess, you know, our assumption as the Friends of Reston Board was that, you know, the RA President and CEO would take any information over to your board. As I said, it's, it's, that would be complicated timing-wise and all that sort of stuff. But I can talk with Karen and.
Yeah, we can certainly make that happen on a, on a bimonthly or quarterly basis, given Friends of Reston update.
Sure. We used to come to RA and present once a year to inform the board, the RA Board of everything that had been accomplished over the, the past year and what we were working on for the coming year. So that's something we can also do. In fact, I think because, yeah, a couple of years ago, we decided to have the joint session, we didn't need to go to the RA Board to present like that. But it is good for, for a public meeting. It's another check on our awareness list that, for everyone to be aware of all the Friends of Reston's activities.
Yep, good.
Erin?
Hi. Yes, Sarah?
I have a quick question about the roundup. I know we have a special relationship with Red's Table. I know Glenn and Maggie are a huge part of it. If we could extend that to other restaurants, and I know, Karen, I don't know if you sit on the Chambers Board as well, or I know Hank, the CEO does.
Please don't give me anything more to do.
We have, Sarah, we can assure you, we've discussed all of that, and Glenn actually did some outreach, but some restaurants, especially chains, just are not able to do such a thing, because it's a change of their whole format and their billing process and all of that. So, you know, we, we, we had a certain amount of money we wanted to raise, and we, we kind of feel, for camp scholarships in particular. But if there were another project and for, you know, follow-up years, that we would, we'd be able to, you know, reach out to definitely other businesses, other restaurants. And then we, in past years too, again, COVID has kind of clouded our, our thinking about, you know, we don't want to approach restaurants with too much. We've had it hard enough. But, you know, the, we used to do a Sweet Frog thing, and all the campers were given flyers in their, for their back, for the backpack packs they get, and just sent home with them after camp, and would promote the Sweet Frog. And anybody who went to get frozen yogurt on a specific day, Sweet Frog would give Friends of Reston 20% of all the sales. So little things like that have been done in the past.
Also worked, we've also worked with Whole Foods. I know I worked.
Yeah, not, not for camp scholarships in particular.
Other, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the idea was that it would be, you know, piloted at Red's so that we could work out any kinks. And then we'd be able to roll it out very easily to other restaurants and have it serve as an example, and just reiterate the fact that it wouldn't be any more difficulty for them. So it was kind of like, we're going to roll it out this way as the kind of easiest in, and then it would be easier to extend to every restaurant.
Thank you, Maggie. That's, that's a really big point.
Yeah, that would, that would be on this campaign.
The post, there's, there's an example of RA helping Friends of Reston, too, the postcards that were developed to put into the restaurant, to, for people to, to see it at the front door, or to, to, to receive with their bill. And it was a postcard that very nice, says send a kid to camp, and about how your donation is going to benefit, your donation is going directly to Friends of Reston and will directly benefit the camp scholarship fund.
Does, does Friends of Reston have a presence at the Chamber? I know they have a new offering for nonprofits.
Yes.
Through Hank.
Yeah.
That would be a good, good connection to get into the restaurants as well.
They do charge a fee. They do charge a fee for nonprofit organizations to join.
They, they do have a new offering for if you're below a certain.
Membership.
Yeah, membership, right.
We have one member.
I'm not sure. That's the piece. I'm trying to figure out if it was membership or employee, or it could be on your budget size. But it might be great for Friends of Reston to have a presence there, especially since we're doing all these.
As I said, it's because, yeah, our, the CEO of RA is always on our board. So that is, we, we've discussed that a long time ago. But yeah, like, that was, we felt with, you know, we are represented in that way, if any opportunities are, are around it, we would know about them and vice versa.
Thank you.
That's a good point, though. It's something that if, if you say they've got a new program on it, I would like to look into it. We, we partnered, we had an event, a networking event last year. It was me and Zoom with the. We, we partnered, we had an event, a networking event last year, um, it was me as in with the chamber. And, um, and it, because of, because of COVID, it wasn't highly attended. It, it isn't the same as meeting in person for such an event, but, um, yeah, it was about this time last year, I think. We did do that.
And if I could.
I can add that Reston Association has a really, a, a very strong relationship with the chamber and that we actually provide their, their, uh, meeting space down, downstairs in our, in our conferencing center. So, um, when the new CEO comes on board, or I think Larry can probably take over my role as I step down. Um, but there, because Friends of Reston is indeed a, a very close partner of RA, there, there's a lot of opportunity there. So there is a good connection.
Right. Thank you, Hank.
I was gonna say that. Kia, you were saying, starting.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, just kind of going off of what everybody said a little bit, I think, um, you know, we definitely, obviously it makes it easier to work with RA because I kind of get to straddle both fences a little bit, but I think that the, you know, the communications department with, you know, that's all the, the communication department's super helpful with everything. Um, that's Ben with the logo for the five K and, you know, Sean doing all of that, both Seans for that matter. Um, so it's just been really, it, it's, it's been very helpful. And, um, a very reciprocal relationship that I'd love to just kind of continue on with, but they've been, they've been awesome.
Thank you for, yeah, I, I would like to see that continue too. Okay, Carol, you want to talk about your new project request form?
Sure.
Mike, can we pull that up, please?
So I can start talking about it. Um, this form that you're going to see is, uh, this was when Kia joined us as our new executive director. This is an initiative. She got right on it and developed, uh, a way to, um, for, for, for super, first of all, for staying organized about any, about any projects that are introduced to, um, Friends of Rest and, but because, uh, the, there's a amount of detail in there that anyone who's interested in coming to Friends of Rest and with a request for funding or something, they, it is all laid out in that form as to, uh, what your homework has to be before, and you know, that this is a, a vetted project before, you know, coming to Friends of Rest and saying, would you be interested in this? Um, first look at the form and, um, you can see what needs to be, uh, there's a second page of it as well. Um, but that first one, yeah, shows you everything, uh, that you can see there's a, a lot of items that, uh, need to be thought about before we can, uh, because they're all questions that we're going to be asking at the first, first very presentation about any project. So this, this, we do have a, quite a few number, uh, quite a few projects that are on our, um, you know, annually we take care of that are in our restricted fund summary, um, that RA staff are aware of. So if RA staff or an RA board member or a Friends of Reston board member were interested in bringing a new project to the organization, this form was the first thing that they, uh, need to have in hand to, um, see if it's doable. And then they would be ready for a presentation to Friends of Rest and so that we could, uh, discuss it further.
Okay.
And again, I gotta thank Kia for coming up with that and making it a reality because it's something, uh, we didn't have before because it was a different format with, you know, with the longevity of the, the former executive director Katie, she, uh, she had all of this in here and, um, you know, anybody, uh, sent her requests, she, she had her way of, um, she had all that same information. Now it's in a form. Much easier to handle.
Kia, anything you need, want to say about that? Speak, speak for yourself.
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? If not, okay, we can move on to our next agenda item, which is 2022 management's identified funding needs, and that's going to be Larry Butler.
Good evening, everybody. Mike, if you want to pull up that, uh, 2022 FOR project request list. I inherited this job tonight because Laura Kowalski is in the state of Oregon. I think somewhere near Bend, Oregon, although the, the air is a little smoky, but I, she's enjoying some time off, so. Um, I will kind of rip through this pretty quickly and just see if, you know, there's any conversation. So what you have before you is what the RA staff and, and management have identified as a project request list for 2022. And I'm not going to go through each one of these individually. If you have questions, I will try to answer them. Again, I found out late last week that I was going to be presenting tonight on this matter. So I will do my best and I think Hank could probably fill in some of the gaps as well. But you see this, there's a lot of different program areas and a lot of different, uh, aspects of the, the mission with respect to the Friends of Reston. And one that has not been in there before, by, uh, the top of the list, the assessment assist, assistance piece, that is, uh, that is a new one for consideration. Pickleball, you know, hey, pickle, we talked, talked about pickleball last night at our session quite a bit. So this is the list that people have to vet and, you know, the process with the RA staff is that they bring these through the CEO. So the CEO has to acknowledge the request from the RA program staff or the department head to actually go forward to the Friends of Reston. So and there's some additional details, some historic detail. I'm looking on the next sheet, Mike, if you want to. I think it's the next page. There you go. Which gives a, uh, kind of a summation over the last five years of various assistance that the Friends has provided to the association. There's additional detail down below, but so really what, you know, this is just to kind of give you a preview of what we anticipate. Maybe not in whole, but certainly in part coming to the Friends next year requests. So with that, I'll entertain any questions and try to answer those questions if you have that.
And Larry, on that first page, Larry, um, there, there's the column that is, uh, does previous project, yes, no. And many of those projects are things that we have been doing, um, annually and, uh, some of them are, I'm pretty sure in our, uh, on our program, the page that is about program, um, on our strategic plan. So many of these things, uh, are, you know, we're prepared to do. Um, there are some newer ones that we haven't, obviously haven't even discussed yet.
Right, yeah, there, there is very close alignment with, with the Friends of Rest and Strategic Plan, no question. And that's, I'd like to say that that's intentional.
Right.
Caroline, were you, did I understand you to be saying that some of these N's on here should really be Y's?
Oh, I don't know. I haven't looked at it in depth yet. That's.
Oh, okay.
After you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I thought that's what you were saying.
Oh, no, no, previous project and it says Y, then it's, um, you know, um, resting camps, for instance. Why? Yes, we, it, yes, we, we, we've been doing that for years and we are going to continue to do that. So that's just one example. Um, there's any that have a no on it. Um, well, I think for, for pickleball, we, when it, when it first got hot and, um, you know, they wanted to convert a, an existing tennis court for that restriping, we gave five hundred dollars to contribute to get that going. So things like that, we've been supportive of in the past. Um, it just wasn't, uh, you know, an established program. It was a one-time donation.
Yeah.
To get everything going.
Now, now these are asking for specifics, like use scholarships for lessons for pickleball.
Correct.
Right.
This is a whole, a whole different angle for the pickleball and also for the resting camps, uh, CPR mannequins for training. Uh, so they're asking for the.
These are all different, yeah.
Yeah, additional.
Right.
Yep. Any other, any other questions about that?
I think I'm, I do, I do, don't know at this point, um, if there's a plan, uh, to, to present any of this to Friends of Rest. And I mean, if we have this list in our hands, um, we can certainly make an agenda item for, uh, one of our future meetings in the near future uh, to go over each one and, and, uh, see how it fits. Um, I mean, you guys are very good at making sure that does fit. It's already there. How it fits in our mission. So, um, you know, we can go over, uh, each item and decide if it's possible for us to support some. I mean, some of them might be like, what are the top priorities? We would need to know. What are the top priorities here? What are the lowest cost items that we can say, easily say yes to? Um, because, you know, our, our funding is not finite and, I mean, is finite, I guess eventually. Um, so, um, yeah, that would be the way to present. I mean, the form for, for, uh, things that are not on our current, uh, strategic plan. Um, I mean, we don't always put numbers, uh, the, the cost on our strategic planner like that might be. And certainly we can't always come up with the full amount, but because when we contribute, it's, it's usually on a, in a cost sharing manner. Um, we know, we know that RA is going to bear the brunt of some of the cost of it, but our contribution can, uh, help ease that a bit. That's normally the way we, uh, worked on some of these projects. So, um, yeah, it would be like, what are the, what are the top priorities and, um, let's choose some items that, uh, we would need to hear that from RA and maybe that form that we have now is, is useful for that, for the, the new projects.
Absolutely, yeah. So I will, I will give it Laura. And, you know, we'll, we'll go through and prioritize this.
Great.
Maybe, maybe we'll kind of do a, a tiered, you know, you know, this top group, second group.
Right.
Third group, something like that, opposed to trying to literally rank them, you know, one through, I'm guessing seventeen or whatever that number is.
Right, and that would make it much easier for us to evaluate.
Okay.
Erin.
Looks like Bob has a question and then Sarah.
And Jennifer.
I thought this might be a very interesting exercise for both boards to do independent of one another and then come back and kind of collaborate on a, on a priority list.
How they match up.
It would be very interesting to see, you know, we all live in our own little cocoons. It would be very interesting to find out, uh, have a broader selection of people weigh in on, on issues.
Well, I think it, once, if, if, if RA can give us what the top priority of need is and then a stat and, uh, pretty, you know, distribute that list to both boards and, uh, both boards to decide, um, you know, what they think their priorities are. I mean, that happens on our board. Everyone might have a different opinion about what's the most important thing on there that, uh, they'd like to see get funded. And sometimes they just think, we can't fund any of this, you know, that it works different ways depending on, um, you know, where we are funding wise. So thank you, Larry, for, for, uh, that presentation.
Sure. Uh, Mike, I guess we'll go on to the next one.
Hold on a second, I think Sarah, Jennifer.
Oh, yeah, I'm not.
Wanted to say something about this.
I have two questions, so I'll let Jennifer go first and then I'll go after.
Um, my question kind of aligns, um, with Bob's suggestion of an exercise. I'm, I'm wondering, because this is the first time I'm seeing a list, so I, I'm wondering if the board can, can talk about what we should ask Friends of Reston for. Um, can we bring that up to the, at the next RA board meeting? As a topic, I guess I would request Bach to put it on the agenda. That we, and, and we can prioritize or discuss if these are the things that we want to ask Friends of Reston for. And luckily all the, no, we're missing one Bach member, but a big group of the, the Bach members are here from our board, so hopefully, um, I don't have to email officially that request.
Um, I, I think that, uh, I think it would be helpful, uh, we can certainly do that, but I think it would be helpful for, um, Larry and Laura to, because you're, they're, you're basically the ones that created this, right? To, to rank them and then, uh, maybe at that point, have the board take a look, but yes, Kathleen?
Yeah, that would, I think that would be the best way for Friends of Reston to be able to view it.
Kathleen, you're, you're on mute. What? You're on mute.
Sorry. Sarah's been really patient. I can say mine after hers. That's fine.
Oh. Go for it. I think you're related to the Jennifer question, so.
Okay, so staff drew up this list. Did it actually have input from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee? If the board didn't know about it, did at least Prac know about it?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to ask Laura. Prac was, you know, very recently reinstated. So they may or may not have had a chance to, to review this.
Right, but isn't that. Art is with the advisory committee and they come to the board and say, we've looked at this, we've studied it, this is what we think. And then the board goes, we don't think the same thing, or this is great. We've been hoping somebody would do it. Why? I, I guess I'm confused about the process. I remember when I was on the board that the advisory committees made suggestions to the board. The board took action and then directed that staff did something. It feels to me a lot like staff is telling the board, both of these boards, what's going on. Well, that really ended the conversation.
I'll, I'll have to ask Laura, you know, the Prac piece, I honestly don't know.
You're on Prac, aren't you, Kathleen?
I don't.
Didn't hear you.
Just, just generally looking at.
I.
Kathleen, I think a lot of this, as I said, it's stuff that we've had in, in our, um, in our planning for, for a number of years. And these are things that would normally come from staff. So, um.
The three things at the bottom, I guess, are what are tickling me.
Oh, we're gonna get to those next.
Oh, those three things. I just, that nice blue part I thought you were talking about.
Yeah.
No, I, I recognize there were a couple of things in there, like for Nature House, a weather center and that stuff. Um, but still, I would think that that's a role that Prac would play, I think appropriately. Or why bother to have the committee?
I think because staff are the ones who in, interacting with the public that use those facilities. I think that's why it comes like that.
But then they would advise Prac and then Prac would come back and advise the board.
Good point. Yes, that's the point. Right. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, this is, this is a combination of, you know, it just, um, financial help with existing programs or to provide scholarships for existing programs and, and a couple of, at least a couple of new things on here, so, uh.
My turn yet?
Sarah, your turn.
No, it was great going last because one of my questions was about the process because I remember we went through Bach for the baby book where we had to approve that expense and it was, uh, so I think if we could, as a collective, establish a process, I love the idea of going to Prac, coming to the RA board and then, so the board members are aware what RA staff is asking of Friends of Reston. That's just a personal request, Larry. I mean, you can talk to Laura and figure out what's the best way to do it. My second question was going to be about the first, um, line item, the assessment assistance. And I know I'm the one that pushed for this. But I'm kind of hoping Hank or Larry can give me a little more info because I thought we were around five. We've gone up to ten to fifteen members. And when I suggested it, it was more sort of just COVID, um, impact. So are we looking at this as a one-time um, COVID assistance or are we looking at this as a long-term? Just some understanding. I know I, I initiated or pushed for this, but I'm just trying to get understanding of what, where you're at.
Um, the, uh, I, I can share with you from, from that perspective on, uh, assessment assistance. On an annualized basis, I, uh, in the years I've been here, I've gotten requests, usually averages about four to five individuals in the community that call me directly and would, are seeking, um, for a number of reasons, always hardship reasons, seeking some sort of a relief from having to pay their assessment for that year. Um, we typically turn that over to our fiscal office or our member services office and they work through a variety of programs, but they are payment programs as there's no authorization for any staff member to, uh, or really for the board to tell a member that they don't have to pay their assessments, that, that's not an out. Um, the last eighteen months or so, uh, particularly last. Um, the last eighteen months or so, uh, particularly last year, uh, during the assessment season, that number doubled, uh, the number of direct calls I received. So it seems to be that there is a small need in our community. The process of how you would go about determining, uh, the, the, that, that would all would have to be worked out. And I believe the reason this is on the list is, and it was brought up briefly to the friends, uh, several, uh, several meetings back. And, um, it was just brought up as a discussion to see if it would be something they would entertain. And they actually, I, I believe said, go ahead and look into it, bring us back some more information. We've actually been tied up doing the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three biannual budget. Really haven't been able to put a whole lot more information together other than what I'm sharing with you now. It's on the list because it was, uh, an initial request. And as you mentioned, Sarah, you're the one who brought it to our attention, but it was all, you know, but it was also from my, on my list because this was an obvious need that I, uh, have been seeing in the community since I've, um, has been serving as the CEO. But there's a lot more work that has to be done into that ticker one. It's on the list to see if it is something indeed that Friends of Reston would even consider funding. Otherwise we'd have to look for another source to support these individuals in our community.
So what I have, uh, what I have in the minutes here is that it was actually brought up at the, uh, July meeting, uh, for Friends of Rest and Hank brought it up and it, the last sentence says, the board will discuss this very involved issue at the, uh, next F R meeting when RA can give a complete presentation and how this collaboration would work. So that's where it was left in July and I don't think we discussed it in the August meeting.
So obviously there, there's a little more work we have to do before we can even bring it back to, uh, Friends of Reston.
Not to, just a follow-up question, Hank, not to put you on the spot, but do we know what's the sort of status of those that reached out during COVID? And this is where, Kya, that form is so wonderful because someone like me could fill it in. And absolutely, I love the part where you asked for, is there an outside source for funding? So that definitely helps. Kudos on the form.
Right.
So Hank, if you could just tell us what's the status on those we talked about during COVID or will that be delayed?
My intention was that we would continue to look for funding despite COVID. Uh, COVID, as I said, my first two seasons here, COVID wasn't an impact and we still had members who were struggling for a number of reasons. They either lost their job, whatever. They're always, it's always a hardship issue. And I, I think from time to time, individuals need support and help. There's, there have not been a lot of resources, either at the county level or in other community service levels where we can help, um, members that from time to time find themselves in need of a little support. What complicates it is how do you actually determine the realities of their situation? Um, and so we were, I actually need to talk to some other agencies that do this for a living to, to find out the process they go through. So my intention would be to, to continue, um, that the need is there. Um, based on my experience, I think based on our member services and, and friend, and fiscal department, um, experience that there is an ongoing need in this community. A small need, but still an important need from time to time where individuals need some help to pay their assessments. And I, I think it should be continued.
Thank, thank you, Hank. And if I could just request both boards, if we can look at the COVID, um, cases with some urgency and then of course take our time on planning a long-term, um, initiative, that'd be great.
I would, this is Jimmy, I would just suggest that those be brought forward with the process that we've instilled, right? We bounce that against all of our bylaws, right? Make sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Then even if it does, we'll decide whether or not it's going to be funded. So let's follow.
It is ultimately, if, if Friends of Reston is being requested for the funding, it is ultimately up to Friends of Reston whether we can support it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good one, Sarah.
I would, I would just add to that too. It's really important, you know, the process and I guess we'll do follow-up. I know Laura actually works in this arena a fair amount with respect to scholarship participants and candidates. And so looking at the various ways, but, um, some body, you know, and I'm not suggesting an individual, but somebody, the RA board or the Friends board has to determine essentially on a case-by-case basis, you know, sort of the eligibility and requirements for when somebody might be considered for, for that kind of, uh, relief. So again, it can be quite complex.
Yes, it is very complex. My, my question that I think, well, okay, we, let's say we were able to assist, uh, two people on this year and then they're back on their feet in the following year, or they sell their house in, in that, within that year. Um, are they going to be requested that they need to, uh, make a donation back to Friends of Reston to repay that relief? Or are they going to benefit from that, you know? They're going to benefit from in the sale of their house or some other way, but when they get back on their feet, are there, is there going to be any kind of, um, you know, restriction in place that they should be, uh, paying it back at some point? That's, that's one question I had about it out of the many, but it's something to think about as well.
I think there, I think there are lots of questions, right? And I, I don't think this is a forum to, to hammer that out, right? We need to have a subcommittee that figures out, you know, and bring this forward, right? And that's true probably for a lot of the things that they've brought up, all very good ideas, but we got, we got to look at them very critically from a, from a bylaws perspective among other things. So just my, just my two cents.
Okay, let's move right along.
So to, so to recap, do we need to talk about, you and Laura are going to prioritize Larry, right?
Correct.
And at some point, it's been, it's been suggested that this be shown to Prac also. Are we get, are, I just want to make sure that we're not putting horses before carts and that was a thumbs up on to Prac, John?
Yes.
Yep.
If I could.
That's, that's my view. Other board members, uh, I think Sarah indicated an interest in that. Uh, I don't know about other board members, but to me that would be a natural thing for us to do.
So just, I kind of wrote down, this is a very, very, very quick process that I wrote down. Let's kind of do a gut check on this. Prac, Prac to Bach, Bach to Board, Board to Friends. That's what I wrote down.
I'm good with that.
Madam President.
That sounds like Tim, yes.
I would just point out there are other committees besides Prac that might have an interest in some of these. It might have an interest in weighing in on the priorities, including EAC.
Right.
And I'm not trying to complicate the situation, but, um, Prac doesn't have jurisdiction over all of these priorities.
Right. Okay, so.
The more, more generically referral to the appropriate committee or committees for review. Would that work, Larry?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll lay a process out, kind of a draft, see what it looks like, you know, share it with everybody.
This is, would definitely fall under, you know, the interest of EAC, the, uh, air quality sensor, retreat planting, et cetera.
This, this is why I would find, um, Larry and Laura's input to be invaluable because they have the daily, uh, on-the-ground overview, holistic perspective on all of these items. Um, I'd be concerned that EAC might weight their list of priorities for the environmental efforts and Prac may do the same with uh, the, the park and recreation, um, related items. Whereas I think Larry, Laura and RA staff bring to the analysis a, um, an objective holistic view. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that because yeah, I think that, um, you know, we have relied on these requests coming from RA staff in the past. And like you say, they know it best. And, um, the more committees are involved, the longer it takes to get these kinds of things to move through. And meanwhile, we're all, you know, not, nobody's taking any action on it. So I, I like the idea of, uh, Larry, as it's suggested, is prioritizing, present it to all of us at once and, uh, we all get our chance to discuss it. And if anybody has any strong feelings about anything, they can say so.
Would we be, would we consider just Bach in the board before it goes to Friends of Reston? I agree about the advisory committees, but would we be open to Larry and Laura's final list coming to RA board? So if the board had any input or any.
Oh, can you explain your concern about that going to your board before it comes to Friends of Reston? Is it a concern or is it just that you want to make sure that nothing's been missed?
Yeah. So if we had any, like Jennifer said, if there was anything the board wanted to add in there, or if there was anything we felt like we could fund in-house that didn't need to go, we can address it before it comes to the, to the, the joint boards.
Right. That's what I wanted to hear. Great. Okay. I understand.
John and Jennifer, I think you were the ones that had the concern about Prac. Would you be open to just Bach of the board?
Yeah, I'm open to both of those, but I honestly think that this process can be done. We have a list. We're going to have a list that Larry can produce before Bach. If EAC and Prac want to take their September meetings and go through it, it still can be put on a September board agenda. Unless you guys were looking for it, you know, at our August meeting, which we don't have, although we've had many August meetings. But, um, it, I mean, I think it's very important that it's before, um, we both develop all of our finalized budgets. And I would think that a September board meeting would, would be soon enough unless anyone objects and it could still go to those other committees.
I, I put a great deal of store in the recommendations of staff, so I, I'm not trying to, um, in any way limit their input, but we do have advisory committees. And, and they, they do frequently hear suggestions from citizens. So why need it be an either or is, is my point. So if, if we can do it in a timely fashion, I think we would benefit from the appropriate committee looking at it, uh, you know, whether it's EAC or Prac or for the assessments thing, it could even be fiscal, you know, I, I, in other words, there, whatever, whatever Larry and, and, um, as acting CEO, uh, would say is the appropriate filtering through which, which advisory committee, I think that would be a positive thing if we can do it in a timely fashion.
I, I think that, that the thing is, as Sarah said, um, if there's anything in there that could be handled, um, you know, by the current RA budget, it makes sense to take it off of that wish list. But, um, if anyone in any of those committees had an idea for something else that they wanted to talk to Friends of Reston about, I mean, this is not the set in stone list, the only thing we all work off of. We, we hear requests from, uh, various groups over the years many times. And if another committee had something like, oh, that wasn't on that list, but I would like to, it, can we talk about asking Friends of Reston's to support this? They can do that at any time. It's just because it's not on the list, it doesn't mean to say we, it wouldn't be heard if they fill out the form.
I'm a little confused and maybe Larry or Hank can address this. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure the intent of this list was, well, you know, if Friends of Reston can't raise these funds, we're going to, you know, try to figure out how they fit into our biennial budget. That's, that wasn't my impression that that's what we were doing here.
When Laura put the list together, it, it was really a, a look ahead. Carol noted it's looking at some of the traditional things that the friends have supported and a handful of other things that would be likely candidates for them to support. All of these have to, you know, go through and at least currently be subject to the CEO saying, let's go ahead and go make the ask of, of the friends for this. So that was really the intent. I mean, it's kind of a look ahead and as, as most of you know, we're working on draft one of the budget right now. And, you know, to the extent that some of these things can be incorporated in the budget, we'll certainly try to do that so that we can, you know, truly go to the friends with, you know, kind of the gems, those things that we think are really in the house. So at least that, that's how I see it. Again, we'll, we'll head out early Saturday morning. We did not have a chance to really chat too much, though.
Yeah.
We'll certainly be doing some follow-up upon her return.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to overly complicate it.
Right. Um, but I see. And the length of time involved when, you know, these committees and RA board only meets monthly and we only meet monthly and you know, it could take many months to accomplish, um, this with people discussing each item. So again, I rely on, we rely on RA staff, uh, bringing us, Larry and Laura, Laura bringing this vetted list to us and, um, and they know that we can't support every one of these items. But if any committee, again, if any committee, uh, were to put something forward to say that this would be a really great Friends of Reston project, we're always listening.
I guess I just, you know, if, if Larry, you can speak to historically how what the process has been.
Not as complicated as what's being discussed here.
Right.
That much I know.
You're right. Oh, I, I assumed that that was the case. So, um, what, it, 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 can, can, can you just tell us pretty much, you know, in twenty-five words or less or what, what the process was? I mean, I under, I understand the board's interest and I appreciate the board's interest, but I think that, I think that we're making this a lot more complicated than maybe it needs to be.
Yeah, this, this session tonight is just supposed to be informational and discussion. It's not to set any rules about how this is conducted.
Right.
Excuse me for a second, if I can just add one thing. Um, I, I think I heard a couple of board members say that it could go through the, the committees and the next, um, RA board meeting in Sep- in September. So it doesn't really sound like that's too long to, to wait, being that, uh, this is the first time that the board, either board is, is seeing, seeing any of these, uh, requests. So doesn't sound like it would be much of a delay.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't be prepared to discuss it at our September meeting. So if, uh, the others can, uh, have their, their, uh, put, have their input completed in September after, um, you know, when Larry and, uh, Larry and Laura can, um, prioritize, present those lists to them. It is informational for them as well. It is not anything like, you know, and they can, you know, put their hands up and say, we would like to, you know, talk more about this or that or add this. But we would not, we would be going off of Larry and Laura's list, um, for discussion in our October meeting if we get to that point, if, if we're ready to discuss it in October.
So, um, yeah, the, so the issue is there, what some, some folks have expressed tonight a desire to um, make this more of a, of board approval before it goes to uh, Friends of Reston. And I, and I'm, I'm hearing that that's not how it historically was done.
That's correct. Yeah, it'd be the staff, the program staff and other staff talking with the department heads, having a conversation with the CEO. And typically it would be, you know, either the pro, program staff manager or the department head, like Laura, for instance, going to the friends, you know, making the ask and then the friends deliberate whether it's a reasonable ask. And then they either choose to support it or not. It's been a pretty simple process.
Janine?
Could I make a suggestion? Uh, perhaps things that are de minimis, two thousand dollars or whatever, do not need this kind of elaborate process. And perhaps you'd want to reserve the process for things like the assessment assistance. So you set some sort of cap, if you will, and that might be an easy way to, to sort the process and have the appropriate review of things that are significant and let things that are more or less of a staff administrative level, uh, just go through the older process. That would be a streamlining suggestion that I'd like to make.
Anybody else? Sorry, Larry?
I think it's a, I think it's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could offer a little input, because Larry has also indicated that the way the process works is the various departments look at what their needs are, and the needs are all based around how they're going to serve the membership. And that they, those general needs are actually brought to the CEO for consideration. I ask a lot of questions like you ask, and then I usually say yes or no, or we collectively say yes or no. And it goes to the Friends of Reston. Historically, as Larry pointed out in the last, in the second page of the schedule, it is historically around 40 to 50,000 dollars. And it's all to assist people to either go to camps or to assist programs that are taking place at Nature House, or to assist with the ongoing maintenance of things at Nature House. What I really think might be a more worthwhile effort for both the boards to have a conversation around, or would be something maybe a little bit larger and a little bit broader and a little bit more impactful for the, the community, like what, like took place when the Nature House was considered and a fundraising effort was launched to create Nature House, a new asset for the community. And that actually is what's, the, the next part of the presentation is where we talk about some major capital projects. Because we've had some conversations at Friends of Reston about, would you be willing to raise or go and do a major capital campaign? And they said, certainly, if you, you come back to us with some projects. And then we go to the board, the operating board of RA and say, well, here are some of our needs. And then we, we get caught in this kind of circular process where we have to go to committee to committee to committee before we could even consider bringing something back to our, to the Friends of Reston. So what we have done tonight, and what's the next thing that Larry was going to share with you, are basically ideas, just something to start a conversation around, three major capital, potential capital projects that we could do in this community if we chose to. And they all would cost about a million dollars. So the conversation really needs to be whether or not the Friends of Reston and RA's board could reach some agreement on something they wanted to do, and then how collectively they would go and raise new money. Because it's currently limited in what, what is being raised annually by the Friends of Reston. And we've also benefited dramatically, and Larry can explain more about this, from the Stream Restoration Fund and the dollars that have, that have flown into that, that pool of money. So I, I really think that the process for some of these smaller items that really add up to 40 or 50,000 dollars a year are handled well. Staff knows what they need. They know what the community needs, and it's not a lot of money. But the, the real question, I think, would be, are there other community assets that maybe this community wants or needs that could be like the Nature House, where it becomes an important funding process, a program that both boards can agree on and work towards? And I don't know, Larry, if you would, would agree with, with my assessment, but I, that's the way I see it as, as the CEO, or my time as a CEO.
That's a great segue.
Yeah.
I see some questions there.
Just a, just a quick comment. I think I agree with Janine that we could streamline, streamline this dramatically. I think the, of the, the list that staff has come up with at this point, the one that is going to probably take, well, in fact, it, it should take the longest amount of time is the assessment assistance. Just to, first of all, to answer the legal questions and then develop, if that proves to be possible, then developing criteria. The rest of these, as I look at them, have been largely done over the years on a continuous basis to some extent. And they could, you know, as Hank suggests, you know, if, if you have, if you have a, an amount of money in mind that you are going to raise, you can apportion it across, across those. So I think that's where we spend the time instead of looking at, you know, whether we're going to allot $2,000 for planting trees.
Yeah, the only item, as, as you, you, you said earlier, the only item on there would be the, the assessment, because that is a brand new thing that was just introduced to us just very recently. And, and as you said, Sarah, for this year, probably. But that is something, yeah, that, that RA staff and board members have to assess before, before we can even consider it. So that list to Friends of Reston is primarily a checklist about what we can go through and what we, we can realistically fund. And without information on any project, we, we can't fund any of those projects. So that's.
Yeah, I just want to ask real quick, just for my clarification. So the, with the form, we have the list, which was just kind of put out there. My understanding was this list was just kind of put together as like a precursor, hey, we've got, these are some things, these are kind of what we're talking about, amounting to this dollar amount. But that's not it. You're not presenting it as a formal ask. The formal ask would be in the form of the form that we created, at which point would come to us. So the way that, with the form, I think the, the beauty of the form is you have to either be a, a board member or an employee, and it still has to go through a director or somebody to sign off on, yes, it is okay to ask for that. And then it comes to us. So there aren't just random forms coming to us. So to me, I kind of felt like it goes through all those checks and balances. By the, how it gets to us, I don't mean to be, I mean, we're for RA. I don't, I don't care. You know, as a Friends of Reston person, the channels that you go through, it's literally by step on that form, right? Guys do that, as long as it's to us that way, then we can consider it. So I think that, that the whole point to that form, it answers all the questions. So we don't have to, we can streamline it much easier. It has to be approved by somebody higher up at RA. It's not just random people giving it to us. And at that point, however it gets to us, it gets to us. And I think once it gets to us, we can put that, that's, that's the preparation, all the preparation we need for it to go on our agenda.
Right.
That's it. So as long as we get it prior to our meeting, that monthly meeting, which is we do on the third Tuesday every single month, you know, you can get it to, you know, the second Tuesday, whatever it is, then we would, then we can be prepared to put it on our agenda.
On the, on the other hand, there, there are items on that list that Friends of Reston can go ahead and decide that we want to fund this. We have operated very much that way over the years, that there is a need identified and, you know, we're all enthusiastic about it and we want to support something like that. So that, that can land, something like that can land in our agenda as well, that, you know, any one of our board members can say, can we talk about funding that at our next meeting? And, I mean, you know, it's, it's our choice too, ultimately, about what will we like to fund. But we always consider the new requests as well.
Right. And as long as it gets to us prior to the meeting, we can put it on the agenda.
Right.
As Jimmy pointed out, anything that we fund and the discussion of Friends of Reston funding anything has to be framed by our bylaws and our charter. And we can only fund things that are for charitable, scientific or educational purposes. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We were created as that for a reason in the initial push to create the Nature House. But anything that is simply to relieve another economic burden on the Reston Association or to maintain lower assessment fees, just is not an appropriate use of Friends of Reston charitable money.
Right, very good.
Okay.
Karen?
Yes?
Um, for me, this comes back down to communication, which you've heard me on the RA board and as a member, even before I got on the RA board, say, it's, it's about communication. Like the fact that we didn't know that, you know, the Friends of Reston gave us almost $15,000 in COVID safety supplies, like that's just, those are good PR opportunities to put in a packet at the board, bring it to us, then the public has access to it. It's something we could put in newsletters. Like that's where I think the, the board, the each board can help the other, is if we can herald from an RA perspective, things that Friends of Reston is doing, that benefits Friends of Reston and in turn benefits RA and in turn benefits the, the entire community. And those are the opportunities that I think that we're missing. So something as simple as, you know, a report, an update, an email from you, Hank, saying, hey, I got out of the Friends of Reston meeting and we did a tally for the year. Here's, here's, you know, what they provided us. I mean, I'd love to be able to send a thank you note to, to the Friends of Reston board for the work that they do. And, and I, right. And I don't, I don't know what, what you guys are giving us. And then certainly, as, as Bob was even saying, like the major fundraising projects are probably things that are, are most concerned to, to the board. Because the ones that are currently on the list, you know, we know about the Event Barn because we learned about it last night, but we don't know where we would put an ADA playground equipment or tree top educational classroom. And I think that that would benefit us to, to stay at a board meeting and therefore get feedback from members as to whether it's something they also want. So that, that's the piece that is important to me, is the communication piece.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah. And, and as you were saying earlier, and I responded, we can definitely do that, you know, incorporate whether they're monthly, bimonthly, or quarterly reports. I can work with Carol or Kia or...
Yeah, I think that three of us putting our heads together, we can figure out the, the highlights that RA should hear about. Yeah.
Okay. So are we ready to move on? Which is going to be still Larry, which is, which is the suggested major capital fund projects.
This is where it gets fun, right?
Ideas to throw out there.
Mike, can you pull up the slides, please? So let me preface this discussion. We, we had a, I attended the Friends board meeting on Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, been a week full of meetings. And so these are ideas. These are ideas that have been discussed either by staff or by the board. And they're just ideas. They're examples of potential major fundraising items. And I will say that, you know, staff, we, of the three that get in front of you, the two that strike the most fancy for staff are the ADA playground and the event park. Let me just say that. And that's just a staff perspective. These are, these are just ideas. And we don't have to go into a lot of detail. Some of the board members who were on the facility tour earlier this summer, you know, we visited this site and said, you know, this is, this is a spot where we think this might be, you know, an appropriate location for, for this kind of barn. You're talking 2,300 square feet, 150 person capacity, those kinds of things, as a complement to what else goes on in that site, can be used by camps, rentals, whatever. Okay. I mean, the, you know, it's kind of a wide open thing. So again, these are, these are just ideas to get the board thinking about, is there something that this community does not have? So we're not talking about a pool, we're not talking about a tennis court, we're not talking about additional pathways, et cetera, something we don't have that would make some, bring some additional uniqueness and value to the membership. That's all these are. These are just ideas. So the first one is this event barn, with the location we've identified is near the, near the chapel, between chapel and the, and I was chapel one ball field. And this is a, this is kind of an example that, you know, this sort of size and shape would fit in reasonably well on the site and not be a detraction from the historic chapel, Abel Roof, et cetera. So there has not been a business case developed for this. Again, these are just ideas. And if they're ideas that the board would like more information on, or the Friends board, or both, then staff can begin to develop that. We're not going to go through a whole bunch of effort, particularly with the program staff being really busy right now, you know, wrapping up with parts of their seasons, to go through the legwork of developing that business case, if there's absolutely no interest in either board of pursuing something like this. So that's the first. So next slide, please.
Larry, can I ask a quick question? Have we had any membership feedback on any of these?
No.
Go ahead.
So the second one is a, essentially a canopy or tree top classroom, something that, you know, gets people elevated into canopies. And let me admit Glenn there. So it's, it's another way to learn where you're kind of immersed in the foliage and so forth. Again, I don't know where there's one of these even close to Reston. But again, it's kind of a unique thing that, you know, staff thinks would be a really interesting, interesting add and one that could be, you know, really interesting for the, for the membership from learning and so forth. And we have not, you know, we haven't gone out to try to identify a site or anything, because these are just ideas. The event park, we did actually talk about a site, because that's a, that's a, you know, a very high use park already up there. And the third one, Mike, view, dance the slide, please, is an ADA playground. And we're not talking the size of the Clumby John tree up in McLean. That's a, that's a $5 million playground. But this is something that Reston does not have, a fully accessible playground. And so we think this would be a great add. I know the, I'm sure Jennifer's really familiar with this, Campus Commons and, and their development plans talked about doing a fully accessible playground, very small, based, but sitting on private property, et cetera. So we think this would be a really great add. Identify the site for this either. But, you know, we think this would be a great benefit to the, to the RA membership as well. So again, these are just ideas to get both boards thinking about, what are some things the community doesn't have that would be of value to the membership? And that, as Sarah asked the question, it's something we have to test with the membership, say, is, is there interest in it? And each one of these would require a referendum, because it's a, it's a new facility, over 500, and I think that barometer's around $570,000 right now, based on the, the deed. So each of these would have to go to the membership for a vote. So again, these are, these are put forward as pieces of the discussion, as Hank stated just a little while ago, you know, is, is a major capital campaign, not unlike what was done, you know, at the very beginning of the, the history of the Friends of Reston to raise funds for Nature House. Is that something that this board would have the capacity and interest in if it were the right thing? And is it also something that the RA board, because the RA board would have to support it in terms of, you know, going through the referendum process, then ultimately taking ownership, maintaining and operating it? That is the end of my brief presentation.
Thanks, Larry. So, comments. I think, I think the first thing to do is to see what, you know, if, if Friends of Reston would have, what their interest would be in at some point embarking on a capital campaign of this nature.
Well, I, I should see, Hank mentioned earlier that, you know, we had, he heard it said that, you know, would we be willing to embark on a capital campaign? I don't think we ever officially said that at any of our meetings. We, like, we're always listening, but to start a capital campaign is a very different animal, um, as far as, you know, except for funding these things on a regular basis. The Nature House campaign, I was involved on, on the periphery of that when it was all started and began. And it took, you know, from 1999 until 2009, when the building opened, to acquire all the funds and make it happen. The Friends of Reston was created to, to build Nature House because it was part of Reston's plan from the beginning. There was the 75 acre nature center was there, but there was no building. And that was, so we were fulfilling part of Bob Simon's plan with, with, with completion of that project. So once that project, and as that project was, was... So once that project and as that project was, was coming to completion. And since then, we've taken on all these other funding ways, things that we, we fund. And they frankly, they take up, you know, our time. So to any kind of a capital campaign, I mean, there would have to be, I would have to see that, you know, like 80% of the community wants this. I'm concerned about the cost of a referendum and not just in money, but the way that RA gets dragged through the mud when these things come up. And I, I, you know, it's, I, for instance, if it was the playground, I think, you know, off the top of my head, I can think of a few ways, well, maybe we could embark on getting funding. Maybe that is, maybe that is something we would consider. But having a price tag like that, you know, we always know these things end up costing more. But there's certain things that, yeah, I, I, I'm not comfortable with because I, I fear that the, the community's reaction. And because Friends of Reston just stays away from controversies, quite frankly. And it would be very, I wouldn't want to be involved in any kind of a project that was going to embarrass anyone. And like I said, I would want to see, you know, a huge, huge outpouring of support for this. And for any one of those projects before I would even before Friends of Rest. And I know it goes both ways. Well, we can't support this project unless Friends of Reston will help us get there. But yeah, I don't think it's, I mean, I'm, I'm always speaking for myself as, as, you know, but knowing what our general board conclusions we've come to over the years for other projects and discussion of larger projects. So I would love to hear if any of our board members have any feelings either way at this time.
So I, Larry, I totally get your point about you don't want to have something fully baked, right? Spend all the resources to get it fully baked before it comes to us. I totally get that, right? But I gotta be honest, what I'm kind of hearing is that, you know, the, the ingredients weren't even put together right before, before it came to this discussion. And, you know, I, I can look at like the, I mean, just getting into the details, the barn thing. We have a barn, my view. It's called the lake house, right? And, and, and aside from all that, I'm just talking as a Reston Association member at that point, but aside from all that, that has nothing to do with our, with our bylaws. I mean, I, I, I would have a hard time connecting the dots on that. The other two, maybe. But, you know, before we really start having deep conversations about this, I think we need to know how serious, you know, to, to the question earlier, 80% of whoever said, you know, are, are people really interested in these things? I mean, I, I gotta tell you, I get the sense that these things were kind of drawn up over the last, you know, 72 hours to have something to talk about, right? And, and that, that doesn't sit all that great, to be honest with you. Just my view, just my view. But, but, but I am, I, I am, I, I would be all about a capital campaign if we were all in and everybody was passionate about it, like the nature center and all those things would be all in on it. But and again, Larry, I get you don't want these things. You gotta, you gotta, you don't want to fully bake these things before we start having conversations. I, I understand that. That's, Carol, yes, that's my, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jimmy and Carol. I really feel like this needs to be fleshed out. But also I think we're in a very tenuous time with what's still going on. We have a lot of needs in the community. And I also feel that we are not getting inputs with, I don't see why the board or someone isn't approaching all these new condos and townhouses going up and asking, why are they not helping us with, with the upkeep of our pathways and, and with the use of all of our facilities? They should also be part of the Reston Association and part of the reason why we're in the hole to a certain extent is because of the lake house, but also because we're not using our best marketing abilities to get these, these new facilities, these new townhouses into our RA. So I don't know, at this point, I think that we're already doing a lot.
Are these just make-work projects or what? We don't have enough to do.
So let me ask real quick. I just wanted to, because my understanding with this presentation was these are literally just ideas, right? But regardless of one, two, three, it could be four, whatever the idea is, the question that you guys are asking would be, would we be prepared to do, take on a capital campaign? So then I guess my question back, I feel like as long, and I think it answers everybody's question. I don't think, they wouldn't be able to make a decision on a cat, on an idea if they didn't, or it didn't have the backing of the community, the board and the community, correct? So if you guys have a project with the backing of the board and the community, then I feel like it's, that's what our job then is, is to raise money for that project, right? Which I understand what you guys are saying right now, there's no backing. You don't know what that is, right? And I agree 100%, but I do also see what they're, what they're, on their side as well, which is, hey, here are just, these are just some ideas that we're throwing out that we could, you know, the community doesn't have. So I think in turn, we're saying, hey, that's great. As long as, when you guys get the support of the community and the RA board and everybody's good to go and you bring it to us, then I, my personal opinion is absolutely, it's at that point, it's our job to fundraise for that, you know, capital campaign.
Sarah, you got your hand up?
I just have a quick question for my colleagues on the board. How many of us had heard about all three of these? If you, if you've seen it before, if you've heard about it, if you could, yes, we heard the events barn yesterday, but the other two. Because that's where, you know, bringing it back to the RA board needs to be aware. We are part of RA with Larry and Laura and staff. And it's really embarrassing to be sitting here going, I'm looking at this for the first time. And as a board member, I don't think we had enough support even among our, our own board last night for the events barn, because a lot of questions that are still left unanswered. So this is where I think it will be helpful if you could, even just as an FYI, it doesn't need to be a board approval or a vote, but just, you know, it'd be nice, just keep us in the loop before it's presented to the Friends of Reston. Thank you.
Yes, Tim?
I, I think Larry's remarks, his preparatory remarks before he went into the details made clear that this conversation was in the nature of brainstorming. And I, I think the idea of an ADA compliant playground is fantastic. And I'd like to thank Larry and RA staff for bringing it to our attention. If Friends of Reston is not the best vehicle, for further consideration of, of this idea, I would encourage Larry and RA staff to continue to think of ways to make it a reality, because I think it would be a tremendous addition to Reston Association. Thank you.
I think, um, yeah, we're, we're getting a little bit away from what the, the whole purpose of this was tonight. This, this piece, of, of course, we wouldn't approach Friends of Reston for anything that we know didn't have enthusiastic support from the community. And this is, these are just, as has been said multiple times, ideas to throw out there as examples of what Friends of Rest, Friends of Reston might be interested in launching a capital campaign for. It could be any number of other things. These are just ideas that staff had that might be good for the community. As Larry said, we don't have anything like these three things. But I, I don't, I don't think we need to get hung up tonight on the merits of these, these three examples. We're just trying to get a feel for, you know, what might interest, you know, given that we had support from the community after a referendum, what might Friends of Reston be willing to, to embark on a capital campaign for? Would they? Not what would they, would they? And so I'm, because I'm hearing a lot of negative reaction because, well, we don't even know if the community will support it. Well, of course.
I can answer that from my perspective, right? Yes. That's simple. Yes. Would I be interested from, from just my little spot on the Friends of Reston Board? A capital campaign? Yes. But it depends on, on what that is, right?
Of course.
For tonight was, is the Friends of Reston interested in a capital campaign and pursuing that over the next several years? From my perspective, yes. I can't speak for Carol. I can't speak for everybody else. But I, this, this whole conversation wasn't teed up that way.
Right. That's right.
But if, but, but if, if, if it were the right project, whatever that might be, it would be something that Friends of Reston would consider.
Yeah. But, but the way, as Jimmy said, it was teed up, it sounds like there really isn't any project around that it would require a capital campaign. So let's make up some stuff that would be good. That's what the impression I'm getting. And, or is it like, let's present three things that are possible and maybe one of those would be good. Is that, was that the intent of presenting it this way?
As I said when I started, Carol, these were ideas that had been discussed at the staff level as just ideas. And I would challenge you all, the RA board and the Friends Board, if you have ideas of something this community doesn't have that might require a capital campaign by the Friends, bring them to me.
Absolutely, Sarah.
Bring them to yourselves. I mean, these were just, these were just staff ideas that were presenting to get this discussion started. But, you know, again, there are probably hundreds of ideas out there. And we just brought three to initiate the discussion.
And I would suggest, Larry, that we go beyond that and even put something out with Mike Leoni to the membership and suggest if these are kind of the things we're thinking of, if you've got ideas, please share. I do think somebody brought up, I don't know if it was Carol or Jimmy, about the PR aspect of this. We are coming out of COVID. A lot of people are hurting. So again, I'm not the communications strategy person, but I think it'll be great if we could include the membership in that conversation. Something in our newsletter saying, hey, if you would like us to consider these. Or do you have any ideas? Share.
I think the membership gets asked on an annual basis when you're in your budget discussions that they could come to the board and, and make any suggestions.
Correct. But not specifically a capital project like this.
They, as a, just a regular RA member, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what the difference is between a capital project and a regular project.
So maybe even if we suggested or shared these things, we'll see what kind of response we're getting back from.
Yeah, I think you're right, Sarah. The, the membership is the first place to go before, you know, I, I wouldn't say no, that we would never, ever develop a capital campaign. But yeah, the idea has to be really, really worthwhile. And then, like I said, you know, reach out to the membership first, or as you said, pardon me, and make sure that there's enough public support for even consideration before fully baking any, any one idea. And yeah, you, you get your feedback, that's for sure. I mean, I was just reading yesterday about RCC considering building a performing arts center. And they, their surveys based on like less than 2,000 people and 29% of them were in favor. So they're thinking, well, that's pretty good. And I didn't think that was pretty good at all. You know, for how many, a couple of hundred people saying, yeah, I want to prefer. And I know who answers those surveys, that all the people involved in the performing arts. I know about 30 of them that, that were involved in that survey. So things like that happen. You don't get full input from everyone. That's, that's understandable. I, I have no idea how statistics work in that way. If you got this much response, that means this many people probably would agree with it. You don't hear about it, you don't, you don't get a lot of feedback until it's happening. And then you get everyone barking about how this is ridiculous waste of money. And again, because if, if, if Friends of Reston were involved and, you know, some projects would be more popular if they thought, well, Friends of Reston is going to, is running a capital campaign to fund this. This is not going to, you know, be taken out of any RA funds at all or affect our assessments at all. So there's, there's that positive piece of it. But, um, you know, they, they're all items that do require maintenance and would eventually fall on RA as an expense. So there's all those things to consider. So, um, yeah, it would have to be a really tremendous idea that I, that I could see, you know, through surveys, putting it out there without, without leading people. I mean, none of you were involved at the time, but I remember years ago, RA putting out a referendum and putting out signs, vote yes, vote yes. Don't tell people to vote yes. Just let them know that the choice is there. And rather than trying to sway them and convince them that this is the best thing ever, when, you know, maybe they don't think it is, but they're implied, I better vote yes, because everyone else seems to want this. It's, it's not a, it's not an election. Vote for me.
It also has to be pointed out, as Janine pointed out at our meeting, that it has to follow what a 501(c)(3) requirements are before we work on such a campaign. I mean, the, the barn, I mean, you're talking about renting it out for weddings and that kind of thing. That doesn't, that doesn't fit our.
Yeah, I'm afraid that language being on there, Fran, is already kind of cooked it for us. We can't, we can't support something that is going to be for revenue generation.
Carol, could we agree as a fore that we need to independently discuss the feasibility of a capital campaign in general during our next board meeting?
We can put it on our agenda for, for future, yeah. Because, you know, we just, it's just been, you know, in an unofficial way talked about. But there's been nothing solid to go on. So there's been no reason to have the conversation. But yeah, certainly that would be a good idea to put it on our, and we could, you know, when we're reviewing the staff list, that when it's prioritized to reviewing that, and it can be part of the discussion about, you know, future, the future of, of Friends of Reston and what it's going to be focused on. That'd be great. Thank you, Meg.
I agree. I think we should have that discussion at the next fore meeting, Carol. That'd be good.
But not to the point, I, you know, I'm a little leery saying that because that doesn't mean throw crazy ideas at us. And, and, you know, we do, just because we say we're, we're, we're willing, doesn't mean to say that we will. So.
Right. Just the feasibility of us even thinking about that we could. And how that would be structured. Yeah.
That's, that's what we're getting at. Yeah. Not, not asking you to get on, to get on board with any of these ideas that were thrown out. They were just there for the, pretty much for the purpose of discussing what the possibility of a future capital campaign might, might be and, and how, how, how could we work to make that happen? If, if we wanted to go that route.
So I guess that's, we, we have no action to take on this item. It is just a matter of bringing it to light. And yeah, it was kind of a shocker seeing that. I think everybody was a little blindsided by like, why are we being presented with this? The, it, it was kind of an odd way to, to show it to us. But, um, because I would have expected to come the other way, that, you know, well, RA and the RA membership, we have, you know, information that shows the RA membership and staff are interested in doing this. So Friends of Reston, would you be interested in establishing a capital campaign? It must have been a much simpler process, because I say, we're always listening. We're, we're always willing to listen. Anytime anybody has an idea for something, we can, we just need to learn a little bit about something and we put it on our agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? If not, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Can I just say one thing? I, I just, I really, I know it took a lot of time to bring these two groups together, but it's really valuable. And, and I know everybody's time is really valuable. But I, I, I appreciated the forum a lot. And, and I think initially when we started talking about this, it was like to have a happy hour. Obviously COVID kind of prevented that, right? But, but I do think where people But, but I do think where people on the four board get to know people on the RA board and vice versa, I think that's only a very good thing. So thanks for all those who did. So thanks.
I, I agree. I think we should get together at least once a year because the boards change. I mean, one board doesn't know what the other's doing and the, and let's face it, we're all volunteers. Most members of the board.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I think it's good too. And that it's an actual, an actual meeting and not just a social event. I think that's important. And yeah, and I, yeah, and we certainly can improve the communication back and forth. So I'm sorry, I, I, that was bad forum Roberts rules wise, because we had a motion that hadn't been seconded yet. So, so we did have a motion to adjourn. And does somebody want to second that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about that?
Can I just make a quick request? Just, it's not a discussion, but to both the chairs of the two boards, if you would be open to setting up a small subcommittee to work on the assessment piece with Larry or as acting CEO? It's just a request.
None at this time. We have nothing to go on at this time. But if it were to come to us as a serious proposition, yes, we would be, we would have to set up a subcommittee.
So maybe RA, Larry, if we wanted to internally have a small group, put those things together, happy to help.
Cool. All right.
Yeah, I, let me, let me look at what some of those.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, so we need to either withdraw that motion or.
Call a vote and we'll, we'll email each other.
Discussion. Because I think Hank did indicate that he, he would be continuing to work on that piece while he was still with us. And, uh, you know, just other things have gotten in the way, but I think that he is, he is going to continue to try to get some information to us on that. Hank, if you're, if you're listening, I believe that's what you said.
I, I will do my best.
Yep. I know. I know you've got just days left, but, but.
And Madam President, though I made the motion to adjourn, I, I think we would all want to, before we adjourn, thank Hank for his service on Friends of Reston.
Good point, John, because this is the last time we'll see him.
Absolutely. Thank you, John.
And thank you, Hank.
Thank you all. I've, I've enjoyed the experience. I wish you all the best. I know Reston's in good hands. Thank you.
Thanks, Hank. All right. All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. My fellow board members, we have a little bit over an hour before our next meeting, so hopefully grab something to eat. Relax.
You told us that earlier, we would have talked faster.
Whatever. No, we're, we're good. We're good.
I thought this was a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for getting together, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
See you all, well, see the board in an hour.
I'll see you later somewhere. Bye.
All right, Carol, take care.